First of all, business is, first of all, I'd like to say thank you all for coming. We do have people on virtual. TV and I believe the mayor is listening in to all that are virtually. The minutes of August seventh, twenty twenty four. A motion, second, all those in favor. Obviously, let us do for the budget amendment. Can I get a motion?
Second.
We probably move in second, all those favor, you just sign the by. I have the motions carried. The beginning of this meeting, let us move personally into the budget amendment. Twenty twenty five zero nine, and Michelle, when you're going to read it to us.
Yes, sir, and Tamika, do you want to present it first, and then I'll give the history?
Sure, so it is the budget amendment for the license renewal for Amtrak. And Michelle, you can get.
So this license has been in place since nineteen eighty five, when the town entered into the agreement with Amtrak to place a ten inch sanitary sewer force main through Amtrak owned property in order to provide sewer service to the Route two seventy nine area. It connects to the Warner Road sanitary sewer pump station. And just as an FYI, Amtrak does not grant easements on their properties. So what we have to do is have this twenty five year license, this current one will renew in twenty forty nine.
But we are prepared that I believe, are there any questions coming from anybody coming aboard? In reference to the agreement? If not, we close that right now that capture. Next on our agenda is proclamation coming from Parks and Rec.
Yes, sir.
Okay, okay. We need someone to present a motion.
I make motion that we accept the.
That's okay.
Okay.
Is there a second?
Second.
Proclamation, second, that we voted in favor of for the amendment that was just presented. All those in favor, you just sign the by. I have it, motion is carried. Now let me go to where I just came from. Parks and Recreation Presentation and Proclamation. And we have Director and Parks and Recreation with us.
Hi, Mayor. This is Lily, and Lily has volunteered with us all summer, helping with our summer camp. She's volunteered, I want to say close to one hundred and twenty hours this summer. She has been there faithfully as scheduled all summer long. I just really wanted to recognize her for the time that she dedicated to our program. So we have a proclamation for Lily. Whereas Lily Mulliken has volunteered her time and talents as a member of Elkton Parks Recreation Team since June seventeen twenty twenty four. And whereas Lily is always ready to assist staff and campers with any task. And whereas Lily's enthusiasm and dedication bring a special light to Parks and Recreation. And whereas Lily clearly recognizes that the greatest investment in our youth is our personal time and attention. Now therefore, on behalf of the mayor commissioners and the citizens of Elkton, we hereby extend our sincere appreciation to this Elktoning member of our community. Watch yourself when we.
Lily, on behalf of the town of Elkton. Everybody, you can watch, and I go where you want. Come over here to me. On behalf of the mayor commissioners, town of Elkton, we would like to take this opportunity present you with this proclamation on your earnest, hard work, dedication. We're so appreciative of people like you, particularly when you don't find volunteers anymore in America, but you still step up to the plate. And certainly, we appreciate what you have given us. And it has your name on there, and Murray already written exactly and spoke what she feels about you and how you've done. I've seen you over there this summer working, and you've been working hard with enthusiasm with enjoyment and behalf of Commissioner Potter, Commissioner Massimiano, Commissioner Brumel, and I'm Charles Givern, and the mayor who's looking, but you can't see him. We want to present this to you.
Thank you. You want to say? Good job.
At this moment, KCI, are you ready for your presentation, your spiel?
Yes, sir.
Okay, if you come forward, please.
Yeah, now, everyone, my name is Nikki Lee, and this is Ryan White here. We represent, our representative in KCI, be here today to present our proposal for the well three additional appropriation application for the town. The well three is located on the south side of the, it's a Flank B highway. And it is existing well with what treatment in the wellhouse. And the current appropriation, meaning the allowable withdrawal from groundwater is five, five hundred thousand gallon per day on yearly basis and eight hundred thousand gallon per day for the month of the maximum usage. And there is potential that as well can be allowed to to withdraw more water to supply the town system considering the town's future demand in the next five to ten years will exceed the current overall water provision to the system. The proposal includes a couple tasks, and the task one is the procedure to apply for the increased water provision to MBE. And they start with submit the application form, which is like a two page free faller form with all the pertinent background information needed for the increase and and other, other like well location related information with the well. The, the, after saving the application, MBE will do a preliminary review and during that time approximately we anticipate a month of the review and they will ask for additional information and KCI will gather and submit additional information as they will do that. And following the preliminary review, next step will be performing a well testing to verify the, the maximum yield that the, the well can achieve. And I'm following that, KCI will prepare a hydro, hydrogeology, a G report and submit that to MBE for their final evaluation. And then they will, based on their, their evaluation, they will draft the, the permit. And because this well is located close to the Delaware and Maryland state line, they will set the draft permit to them for their comments as well during the final phase. And, and the KCI will submit, gather and submit any information address any comments that may, may come from Denver as well as MBE during the last, last stage for the final permit. And the, the, this, the task, so this is the, the overall general procedure for the application. And the most important part is, is to do a well testing, verify the existing like the, the, the maximum capacity of the existing well that can be allowed to withdraw. And that is described under the PAX two. And so we propose to utilize the existing facility at the existing wellhouse. And so right now, the, the pumping rate is, 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 is around two fifty to three fifty, and that can be increased to allow the, 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 the well testing including a, a, a pass to determine the, the, the testing rate and then followed by the twenty four hour well testing and, and the recovery. And KCI will, 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 will coordinate with the town DPW and Infomark during that testing period and a couple well will be, will be selected for monitoring the, the water level variation during the during the, during the testing, and those will be recorded and included in the report for MBE's evaluation. And and we access with existing pump can be, can achieve a higher pumping rate comparing to the typical pumping rate it's doing right now. And, and so that's, that's our proposed action. And if needed, we can also, if like we found out maybe a higher, higher pumping rate than the existing pump and invited is is beneficial to the town. And that is, that is another option that we could engage a third party subcontractor and then to just install a new pump in the well. But, but that is kind of only a, on a needed base and it is described as option in this proposal, but that work hasn't been included in the scope of this proposal.
It is included?
It, it is that.
Not.
It is that, yeah, yeah. Unless like we determine that is necessary. So, and and, and, and the, the, after the test three is reported, we're going to prepare a hydrogeology report based on the well testing results, and that will get, go to MBE for their to make a final decision on of what would be the allowable maximum withdrawal from this, from this well. And the the, the proposed, the proposed phase from all, all the three tasks. It, we estimated a total of forty five thousand six hundred and ninety dollars plus five thousand direct, direct expenses. And, and those are not thirty based on the, on the time of time material. The, the, the duration, we anticipated the original of approximately a year and a half to two years for the entire process. Yeah, yeah, the major, just based on our previous conversation with MBE, like the, the final evaluation, that's, that's a time that we're, we're doing the well testing and submit those to them, and then they'll, they'll pick a look, detailed look. That could change, but that's the information we concerned at MBE from our last competition. So, so we suggest to get this process started, a survey as possible. And right now, KCI is actually doing the, the thirty percent design of the, of the the well, wellhouse three upgrades. And the, the pump were designed allows for the, for the increase of the, of the rate to correspond in any future the, the, the increase, the grid average daily, daily, daily rate we're, we're going to propose. And then that will be eventually determined based on the well testing results and, and MBE's feedback.
At what point would you know the maximum amount?
That'll be after the well testing, the, the, that, and that well testing can take place after MBE's preliminary review. The
Before we really have any answers.
Yes.
Right.
Right, so there's, there's two ways to look at limiting factor. Answer your question, there is, what can we physically pull from that well site? Not simple, it's hypothetically speaking, physically, how much water can you get out of there? But as, as we mentioned, we're, we're hoping to get significant amount, significantly increased and result in providing water for hundreds and hundreds of additional homes and businesses. But that's only half of the equation, because if the other half of the equation is just going to take longer, calendar standpoint, is MBE and Denrec's final stance on, okay, town of Elkton, if you're pulling that much more water from the aquifer, we got to make sure that it doesn't have detrimental impact into the surrounding areas and crossing state line in the Denrec. And so we'll know sooner than later physically if we can pull the water, and then it becomes much more an MBE and Denrec's plate in terms of approving that amount. Or they could potentially approve a track in or that amount. I think Elkton has a pretty big case to make, given their, given the growth number.
Okay. And would those birth numbers also assist in getting newer?
At the same site or a different site?
Different site.
Yes.
Okay. So that's, you know, the other part of the.
Right, I mean, you're right, I mean, big picture, this is a continuation of our last meeting when we presented big picture, the number to the town, this, this is the result of that.
So you, you have an estimate on what the current well can do. But there's also possibility that we may be able to enhance that to do more.
Yes, because essentially, right now, well three operates, has its cap based off of a permanent value, not a physical ability to pull more water out.
Yeah.
So we're making this stance to MBE, hey, since we have, feel comfortable that we can physically pull more. We need to do all the paperwork, send them all the paperwork and give, and have them improve the, the ideal feeling more on, on their end, which they're looking at it much more comprehensively throughout the geographic layer.
And what do you have in common, sorry?
Just if you have any questions, we were asked to present this proposal for you to, if you're to ask any questions, but I guess wouldn't be.
If you all would vote as to whether or not you're going to accept this proposal?
We should have the app, we should accept, we accept the proposal. It started, one question I was going to ask online, but anyway. I make motion.
Probably move second that we will proceed with proposal that you have, all those in favor. Sign the by.
Aye.
Aye. I have a motion is carried, you are. Pretty good, you will.
Thank you very much.
Well, okay, so what about, what about the additional well, at what point do we work further into that?
We we, if we're discussions, it's been an ongoing topic for several years now. We, we are actively looking for potential new well, the town's been looking for a new well site since, since the whole twenty years I've been working with the town. And what we, what we've gathered is that while there are a couple potential candidates, not a technical term, but this is the low hanging fruit, this is to us and to the folks of the town we work with. Expanding the nasty and wealth degree is the low hanging fruit for maximizing your yield right now.
Okay.
New, new well locations are a good idea, and we should always be looking to those, in, in my opinion. But then you're drilling a brand new well, new test well. If you got to own the property, or you got to get access rights to, to the property.
Yeah, well, she brought, you know, you brought that presentation up before. And your last time you were here, it was awesome. And you talked about two different sites.
Right, right.
That are probably doable.
We, we agree, and we're, we always support the idea of pursuing this. We just, we understand that that's a heavier risk.
Okay, got you. Well, I thank you for that personally.
When you guys do your research on well three, will we have an idea of its maximum capacity? And what's the timeline when getting that information?
So, yeah, glad you asked that, because if you look at the schedule, I know, I know the twenty four, the eighteen, twenty four months jumps out at you, and if you look at the schedule breakdown, like a year and a half of that is what is going through the MBE draft term and process. And, and so to answer your question, physically, we're going to know if we can pull substantial amount of additional water on the, on the front. As soon as we do the, the wells.
But you have to watch the aquifer, correct?
That's right, the, the, the several nearby wells will be monitored on the water level drop down during the test. And that, that will give it information and also give MBE the information for their evaluation. To determine the, the allowable withdrawal.
And that itself will give us a good feeling for the eighteen month process starts on MBE side and how significant that well, that well going at was. So yeah, we'll, we'll definitely be able to speak on that and have discussions before and during this eighteen month process where sort of an MBEs lab.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we have the schedule, she says I'm the boss, so I'm going to use lives of my authority. We're going to change one thing around, and I'm going to ask if Michelle Anderson, who is our assistant administrator, she will read into the minutes, the installation of fiber optic brand band network, and then we will hear from that person representing. And the reason why I am going at it, because Rob, all I believe is online, Jean's here, we're all here, she has a Bell appointment in about twenty minutes, so at least. If you will, come please, Michelle.
So what you have before you is a presentation, a draft MOU with Think Big Network, Mr. Mark Wagner is here, he'll make a presentation to the board. Also, we have our IT contractor, Mike Devine here. Mike and I looked through the draft MOU and had a few questions, and we drafted a, a list of questions. And also too, I want to read to the board a statement that Louis had mailed out to Mr. Wagner July sixteenth in response to draft, the draft MOU that Mr. Wagner had sent. So, as a synopsis, Mr. George says, I'm certain that the mayor and commissioners may be interested in listening to your presentation, however, the board would not approve an agreement at that time, since an agreement of this nature must be thoroughly vetted by a number of parties and any changes negotiated with Think Big. I cannot address the board's interest in approving an agreement that does not provide reasonable compensation to the town for the use of its rights of way. Consequently, Think Big should be in a position to pay a fee to the town as one of the terms of this proposed agreement. Additionally, Think Big must meet with our director, Department of Public Works, to discuss in detail the who, when, where, and how the fiber network will be installed and the impact on the town's rights of way, including restoration of any disturbed areas. The use of directional drilling for subgrade installation presents significant risks to the town since damaging water, sewer, or stormwater infrastructure adversely impacts the residents and business community in the affected service area. These things can be discussion items with DPW director, and I did confirm that Mr. Wagner did meet with DPW.
Good.
Thank you.
Hi.
I, I, I guess, Michelle, we share our screen.
I'm just about to, there you go, you got a shot.
Okay, so we're on Zoom meeting, and then maybe you can help us with the chat.
Well, chosen share screen, do you have that option?
New time can be given us a spill. Yeah, so hi, I'm Mark Wagner, I'm one of the co-founders and the chief of partnerships with Think Big Networks, I'm joined today by my co-founder and CEO president, Janasavat, director, vice president, director of operations, Craig Malan. I have a board member here as well, Ted Schrempf, that is instrumental in the, in the financing and where we spend our investment. And Ted is probably traveled furthest to anybody here today, at least one of you, except from Florida. So we're honored to be here today to talk about Think Big Networks and our desire to bring our fiber optic network to Elkton. As Michelle has pointed out, we've had some preliminary conversations, and they're all Devine. And Department of Public Works. And we can get into some of that, but if we can. So Think Big Network started in two thousand sixteen, we began installing customers in two thousand seventeen. We're a Maryland based company, all of our employees are Maryland based. Our most recent project is in Happy Grace, about eighteen miles to the west of here. We are very anxious and excited to come to Cecil County and particularly to Elkton. And if you can go straight to the. Okay, so I would like to talk about this slide, what, you know, one of the things that was very exciting to us about Elkton is that we feel like there's a huge need here, and what this slide is, is Upla data, and Upla is the number one speed test that people use in America. So when you're testing your internet connection to find out how fast it is, we can, we can test for up and down with speeds, and what this slide is showing is upload speeds. And upload speeds is where fiber optic broadband, which is what we do, has a distinct advantage over cable, and what you see to the left and to the right of Elkton in Cecil County, there are some various right fiber colors, and that's what Upla data looks like, you're getting very strong upload speeds. In the middle, where you guys are with the, with the cooler data, the greens and yellows, it's a very slow upload speeds. And this is indicative of cables, this is indicative of cable systems that are dated, for instance, like the Comcast system that you have. And this is one of the key indicators that we look at when, when we, when we look to make investments in new areas, because this is an issue that we solve right away with our, with our internet. Next slide, please. So, and on top of looking at data speed, we also work with data about the communities. We look at, you know, density, we look at how easy it is for, to add to our network. And in this case, as I mentioned, we're in Happy Grace right now, it's eighteen miles. We have resource along three forty that we can build off of. So this is a project that we can get started with right away. As a matter of fact, we have equipment right now in the, the Elkton, in an Elkton location at the state state administrative offices. So we would, I mean, our plan would be to start right there, so this is, this is a right away situation if we get started. So that's a, you know, it's a picture of our network as it exists right now, we have planned in Charles County, a couple of places, Kent Counties, which is where we started, and then in Hartford County, we are actually the broadband provider of choice, we are the partner with Hartford County for their H band network, which is their municipal network. So we have extensive network, you know, in a very strong partnership with Hartford County. Happy Grace, as I mentioned, and then you can see how it makes great sense for us to continue to do these into Cecil County. And in particular, Elkton. So from here, I think, Craig. So talk a little bit about what, what would the network development look like? We have looked at, you know, the community driven out, we've met with public works. The, this is a completely new network, this is not relying on any existing infrastructure. This is a complete build. If you were to completely replace your water lines or completely replace your sewer lines, it would be something that can to that kind of work. So we very carefully engineer what, what would take place and how we would construct and where we construct the network to ensure that the network would be support.
And where we construct the network to ensure that the network would be, uh, support, not only the current needs, but the future needs of the, of the city. What we have here is showing within the city, there are a number of areas where the community, uh, you know, individual parcels are served directly off. Public rights away, there are other portions of the community where we would have to enter into private agreements. So the, the orange color, the mustard color is the public right of way premises. The blue represents communities where we would have to enter into private agreements with, whether it be an apartment or complex management company. Or homeowners association in order to provide that service. The, you know, the intention here would be to build, uh, a network that stands the test of time. The network we build doesn't have any metallic components, is housed in a high density polyethylene, uh, plastic conduit. That you could place the fiber cable itself, has no metal components. Uh, the technology for fiber continues to evolve, you don't have to replace the cable itself. You just replace the source of light and receivers with the components at the ends. So this is why, you know, this is considered a state of the art network because of the ability for it to scale and grow. But what we would start with building in the community would, we'd come out of our point of presence on Chesapeake Drive. At the county complex and work basically from what is the southeast quarter of the city and work north and west. Meeting with public works, the concern about the downtown area and some of the challenges of construction. Our preference is to work in the communities that have well-defined, uh, wide right of ways. And once we're in the community and working, work street by street with public works to identify what obstacles might be in the, in the main street area. So you see kind of a, uh, a non-covered area initially because we don't have designs for downtown until we start working closely with public works. But we have a lot of demand occurring from the public right of way communities around the south side and north of railroad tracks, north of the metro. You know, earlier we heard a little bit about the concerns about a project of this nature, you know, what could take place, what, what could go wrong? And absolutely, we'd never, you know, pretend that a construction of this nature of infrastructure couldn't have a problem. But here's what we, we can share, we have a long history of building these kinds of networks in these kinds of cities here in Maryland. Our staff are not contractors and employees coming from across the country or far away. Uh, everyone who works for the company who lives in Maryland is very familiar with the geography, the roads and the communities in the area. And we proceed very cautiously. Uh, directional drilling actually while can be problematic when you have the right technique and you have the right experience. Uh, can be very non-disruptive for a community versus open trenching. Uh, where you're digging up the streets and exposing, uh, dirt along the entire way. Instead, you have a couple of entry pits that are easily restored. Uh, our technique involves cutting the sod, peeling the sod back and preserving the sod on, on the park. Doing the bore and then replacing the sod and seeding in straw. Uh, we maintain a moisture as necessary depending on seasonality, uh, either with a water truck or, or mother nature. The techniques that we use are, are considered, uh, best in class for this nature of a network construction. But it is disruptive, it is, we're working in people's front yards, whether it's the right of way, it's in front of your house. And you believe that you, you own all the way up to the curb. And these are people that we're going to want to make customers, so we can't make them mad while we're doing the construction. So we go out of our way to over communicate. We have community engagement sessions, uh, before we start construction, which Deanna will talk about. We will door hang the doors, uh, right ahead of construction as we receive our permits from public works. We then go back and individually door hang so that customers know who's working, when they're specifically working on their street. Uh, there's a, an ability to contact us if they have a concern that we can address. Historically, in the communities that we've worked, our, uh, rate of concerns versus the thousands of homes we've passed is a very limited number. And I know that, uh, there's been some contact with Havering Grace, for instance, at nearby city. That, uh, you know, we have great experience with, we've passed several thousand homes now. And there were something on the order of five or six concerns and questions asked that really was about education, about where the right of way is, where are the water lines? Uh, we comply fully with the state rules and law around utility locating. Uh, we call in our locates, we locate requests, other utilities will then mark their locates and then their utility location in paint. Which tends to concern people, but it's really critical to comply with state law to ensure that we avoid hitting any other utility. We're fully compliant and we, we embrace the spirit of that law. Because ultimately, we will then be operating a network in that community and we want our facilities to also be protected. So we, we spend a lot of time explaining the process, but it is building a whole new network, a complete network. And there is no way to do that without making holes in the ground, without pulling cables through conduit. Without putting road cones out in the road to make room for the machines. But the amount of time that we're on any one street or in front of any one home is relatively short compared to the entire project as we work our way through the community.
Relatively meaning?
Typically, in any one neighborhood from when we door hang to when we finish, uh, placing the, the handholds in the ground. Uh, and the condo placement, we're typically disrupting the ground for two or three days. And then we're coming back and, and opening those handholds up and pulling the cable through the conduits, then up in place. Um, actually, uh, everything we will place, uh, wherever possible, we underground. Uh, we're not attempting to rearrange the telephone poles or replace telephone poles. And the items that will be put in the ground are flush with the ground, so when you look down the street scape, you don't see them standing up. We, we do know that some other utilities in this area use pedestals that stick up above ground and not all of them are closed all the time. Not all of them are straight and neat, but we have found that, uh, the vaults that we use that are often seventeen by thirty inches in dimension. And sometimes twenty-four by thirty-six near intersections are, are flush with the ground. Uh, where permitted, the non-state highway right of ways and community right of ways, they would be a polyethylene, uh, box that has a green lid. So that when you look down the street scape, it's, it's minimally invasive once the work is done. Now, we, we do put up a lot of signage during constructions and people know who's working in their neighborhood, they might have missed the door hanger. Um, or, you know, one person in the household might have picked up the door hanger and the other person didn't see the door hanger. So we do put signs in street corners that explain what's taking place during the construction. We want to make absolutely sure if somebody has a concern, they're coming to us and then we can resolve it, not coming to you.
Do you go down both sides of the street?
So depending on the nature of the subdivision, we sometimes go down both sides of the street. We sometimes go down one side of the street and cross the street laterally. Uh, depending on the density of the community, depending on the layout of the community, depending on what's in the right of way. So that's part of what we would share with Public Works Department when we supply permit application. We show exactly what work is taking place and where we would be placing our facilities, where we'd be placing our boxes, the size of the boxes. The conduit that we're using is inch and a half, uh, so they're not, it's not very large conduit. Because the fiber is relatively small compared to say a water line or, or some other utilities.
It seems phenomenal to me, the amount of, you know, digging and trenching and whatever has to be done in every single. Neighborhood.
Yeah, it is, that's, that is the exact reason that we use directional drilling. Uh, directional drilling allows you to open a hole, use a machine, it's, it's like a drill that you use in your home. Uh, it drills horizontally with a rod, you open a hole and you bore or drill horizontally under the ground. And there's technology that allows you to know how high that bit was traveling and actually manipulate the movement of that trail. And you typically will open up a hole every two hundred feet, hundred and fifty, two hundred feet, it depends. How dense the community is, how narrow the lots are, the narrower the lots, we have to have, uh, there's handholds so we can then ultimately add. The fiber drop, the drop that goes to the home when somebody subscribes, those boxes have to be periodically spaced in order to. Uh, access the fiber to install the fiber to an individual home.
Well, that, that was my, oh, the curious question I had there, how does that work? So you've came, you've come down my street, so all the cable plowed down, now what do I do? As a customer, what do I have?
So we have a, a pretty good process where we want to know in advance if you're interested. So during the process of construction, we will, you know, ask the community, you know, who would like to subscribe immediately. And we get a large number of customers that do subscribe and we're aware, so while we're working in the area, we'll then put the service drop. We can't go on private property until somebody actually subscribes to service. We then run a much smaller wire from the handhold, uh, along the right of way for a very short di- distance and then into the, into the home. And run that wire up to the side of the house, or I should say run the fiber, it's a plastic jacket, it's about quarter inch in diameter. And then we'll put a termination box that's about this large on the side of the home. From that point, the interior fiber work takes place. Uh, so when you subscribe, we'll install that service drop, but until you subscribe, we won't install the drop because it's on private property.
And, and that, who pays for that?
So generally and historically, uh, in the early days of our bill, we offer free installation.
And now?
Well, we're, we, we, the early stages.
And if it wasn't, what's the, what's the going rate?
So, um, and generally within our M A U's, we have a three hundred foot construction that we do for free. Um, when we come into a community like this and we're building out.
I do that, I, I know.
Can you hear me? Okay, sorry about that. So, um, you know, at the point where we're coming in now, we're offering for installation, uh, for those that subscribe. Generally in our M A U's with other counties, we, um, provide the first three hundred feet for free. And then we have the option to charge for over three hundred feet. Um, and at that point in time, if we do charge, we generally, we pass one of our costs, which is generally about a dollar a foot for direct buried fiber. So if somebody is five hundred feet off the ground, uh, off the, the road. Later down the road, they could potentially have a two hundred dollar installation charge. But at, at this point in time, when we're doing a mast bell out, that's what we're looking for, we're not looking for people to pay to, to, uh, get onto our network. We're looking for, you know, subscribers to join us.
Sure, what's this white box?
So, so periodically in a, in a community, um, we come in and we need to amplify the light. While there's very little electronics in the fiber optic network. Uh, at two locations within Elkton, we predict that we'll need a box that will be a source of light. That then will extend out through the fiber network to the individual homes. And within the M W, what we'll be asking for, we already have one of those two locations under contract at the county facility as part of our existing network. But we're looking for one location for another one of these boxes, so we thought it would be useful to actually show an example.
Yeah.
Of what that box looks like. And that's what takes the very large internet connection and divides it up into smaller pieces for individual customers.
Do you have one in the county though?
We, we are, we have a contract for a rack and facility, not for a cabinet, but inside. The I T, uh, huppets at the back of the county building today, a rack of equipment that we contracted for. That will serve the south portion of the city, uh, basically south of, of the, uh, of the creek. Uh, the other cabinet that we'll need to place that we're looking for, we've had discussions, uh, the mayor had suggested perhaps. Placement next to the maintenance building by the creek in the grass. I think that's something that, you know, still up for discussion, but we would need two locations. The reason we need two locations, it also allows us to build a very reliable network. Because we would build a fiber rate, so signal could travel between those cabinets from more than one direction. So if there was a, a cut, if somebody was digging and they cut into the fiber, those cabinets would remain up and running because the signal would travel from another direction.
Uh, you mentioned some internal work in the homes. What, what is involved in that?
Um, great question. We don't use any of the coax infrastructure, cable operators really are, are analog media using radio waves. What we have is a all-digital network that relies on an optical network. So when we enter the home, there will be a short distance of fiber run, an internal fiber run to a device called an optical network termination. And what that is basically converts the light into an ethernet signal. And then we plug in a router, a wifi router at that point, often known as a gateway. So there's a very limited amount of, of wiring that's done inside the home. Uh, we consult our technicians, who are all in-house technicians, they'll consult with the individual homeowner because. Homes architecturally are very, very different and people tend to use their equipment differently. And some customers for their work need a wired connection, uh, other people just prefer to have their whole home covered with, uh, wifi, you know, wireless. So we're able to use different pieces of equipment depending on what the customer really wants for coverage. We have a, a phenomenal, uh, wifi gateway that generally covers every home except for the largest. And then we also have something what's called a mesh repeater that extends the wifi. If you have an unusually large home or home made of some unusual materials that wifi doesn't penetrate. We have the ability to, to add devices to ensure full coverage. Generally that from the point of entry in the home to where we put our optical termination, it's usually about ten feet, ten or fifteen feet that we run in. But it really depends house by house and that's the, that's kind of the consultation we do with the homeowner.
Thank you.
Um, I just want to start to, number one, thank you for hearing him today. Let me actually talk about really what the difference is, I know that Mark talked about the Uplad data on the, on the front end of this project. But, you know, just the, the benefit for your residents and your citizens by having an, an, an option in your town, right? So right now, pretty much anybody here is, uh, using the incumbent provider. Um, our system is different than your system, by the way, and, and I'm going to explain it, um, Mark made up this great metaphor of talking about our system. So, you know, you're in New York City and, and you buy a round trip ticket to come down to Elkton and you want to go a hundred miles per hour. So you buy what you think is a hundred mile an hour ticket to get down from New York to, to get to Elkton. And then you realize your return ticket, you can only go twenty miles an hour because that's the max speed that that train will go on the way back. Right, so if you look at, uh, the way that the internet, way that the service, what we do is we bring in, we give you a hundred mile ticket. From New York to, uh, to Elkton and then we give you a hundred mile an hour ticket back to New York City, right? So in your home, the cable came around and it was generally to bring stuff into your home, not to leave and, and push stuff out of your home. With the change of times and how everything, you know, with, with COVID, with teams, with, you know, people working remotely. Everything that people are doing now, they're not just bringing data into their homes, they're pushing data out of their home. And that's the benefit of fiber over cable is that we have a much better, uh, solution for pushing data out of your home and making it seem seamless. Right, plus the latency, I mean, you talk about it all the time, you know, with the buffering that you get with cable, you don't get that with a fiber optics product. So our product is very similar to Rise and Fire, so when you think about like what, what our company does. Um, when we come into town, you know, we, we want to have, you know, we want to engage in your town, we want to become part of your community. We will be part of your community for the rest of this community's time and existence because we are going under the ground and we'll always be here. So, you know, we don't want to come in and just leave, we want everyone to know that Think Big, um, is here to stay. And that, that our product is, is available and we want to stand the test of time. Um, so we have a lot of community events, um, you know, we've done a great job, I think if you talk to Havering, it's like we already have. You know, we have really engaged in the town, we, you know, getting involved with the community in every way from, um, the Chamber of Commerce. And, uh, that kind of development, uh, we hold community events to try to educate folks on our service. So that they, you know, understand what they're getting, um, and. Uh, you know, so here's just some samples of some things that we've done, we were in the Havering Grace spring. You know, we hold events in parks that invite the residents to come out and talk and, and to really understand our service compared to the incumbents' service. And, um, and so we start, as we do it, as, as Craig said, you know, we come out, we door hang. We door hang every house regardless of civilization because it's not a deliberation, it's just a notice of construction. We want to make sure that everyone understands that, um, that, that we're coming and that there will be some disruption in front of their home. And we try to do it methodically, we don't just go through the town and door hang the whole town, we, we door hang as we go. So that way it's, it's right in the, the, uh, on the front end, people understand. Um, then we start a series of mailing campaigns where we send postcards, we send, then we go back and we door hang, you know, talking about our services. We will be out in the street as they're constructing, we do have people available, you know, when we first start doing construction. Out there to be able to talk to folks about what it is that we're doing, answer questions so that, you know, people really understand what's going on. Uh, we have a market manager for the area, Michelle Bell, who's behind us, is the market manager for this particular area. Um, so she will be, you know, you'll see her floating around, uh, you know, a lot, she wants to make sure that everything is going smoothly, we have construction. We have construction managers, we have our VP of Ops, you know, we we're very accessible to, you know, to to stay constantly in patient with the talent and the benefits. Um we have two different packages that we're offering. Um one is a thousand megabits per second down and up. Uh and then the second one is five hundred um down and five hundred up, now toward the up, four hundred up. So people do have choices. We do not charge an installation fee. We do not charge any box rentals. So as you look at and when a person looks at their bill, unless they subscribe to telephone service, they will just see at this point one line item unless tax comes along, which we have no. Uh there's something to feel about that, but you know, if you say that your package is ninety-five dollars, it's ninety-five dollars. Now with your bill, there's no hidden fees, no gimmicks, no data caps. It it's it's just, it's what it is. No contract. We, the only contract that we have is we will, we contractually say to the homeowner that for the first two years, we will provide that service that we are providing to them um for the fee that we have set up on that we're going to provide that service for. Uh in the past, I can tell you, we have actually been, you know, operating for since twenty seventeen, I've had folks online. We have never went in at this point in time and made anyone's rates. So we do have track this track record of you know, hey, we're not going to set up, put you on promotional pricing and then raise you two years later. Uh the in-home equipment, no rentals. Um I'm going to let you talk about the devices.
So so we, the technology, as I mentioned earlier, the gateway, uh we use very current modern technology. Uh it is not sold. So over time, you know, we upgrade our our technology and upgrade our equipment. Currently, what you see there is the gateway device, which is approximately this tall, that provides the source wifi in the home. The small white device is an extender. If you if you were to need an extender in a home for a large home or a home perhaps with natural plaster, this is historic homes here that uh the materials in the home might require wifi repeating. And then we tie it all together with an application. Uh the the customer can see what's connected on their home. You know, what their bandwidth uses. They can do a speed test. They can do some self self diagnosis. There's a F A Q in there. But it's an application that allows a customer to kind of understand how the internet in their home is being used. Uh it also, you know, helps support the customer if they have a question about how their service is performing. One of the things I I do want to share is that you can see not only your speed, but you can also see your latency in the act. We talked a little bit about latency, but you know, fiber versus cable, uh it it's how the the information uh queues and the delay. And if you're on a a teleconference or a or a tele doc, you know, you're sending information up and there can be an unnatural delay or a stuttering that can occur when you have very high latency, where fiber doesn't doesn't have that. You won't see the dreaded message of shame in in Microsoft Teams. It says, poor network quality in the upper right-hand corner, you know, when you're on fire.
I wanted to address the 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 questions that were uh addressed at the very beginning of this, to talk about, no.
I don't know if you're going to address all the questions because there are a series of questions. But uh my board members may have questions pertinent to this.
Okay, that's fine.
And you know, then we need to come to a conclusion because we do have others following behind you. Thank you.
I just want to make make a comment. Thanks for uh coming and sharing this with us. Um I talked a little bit to the mayor about this. I know you guys wanted to get in to a presentation at a works uh workshop, but un- unfortunately, we were not able to get you guys in here. Um I would like to really give a little bit of time for the community to have a little bit more input on what you guys are offering to us. This is the first I've I've heard the whole scenario of what you guys are offering. Um using the different um um uh equipment that we use in our our homes right now. Some people might be comfortable with it. We can't speak for them and and say, yeah, let's go along board with the fiber uh information that you gave us today. I'm not comfortable with saying I vote yea or nay for it right now because this is something that you're bringing to me. I'm not a technical person. There's my technical person right back behind you. And we need to get some input from the from the rest of the board and even our board members. And I would like to at least have uh Louis involved with this before.
No, I understand that, but.
But I'm not saying no to it. I know a lot of people are looking for the fiber uh optic uh.
But it becomes a choice. It's not a if it's not a this or that.
But the digging in front of, I'm using exactly, digging in front of my house and I know I don't want it. Why are you digging in front of my house? That's first question. It's going to come from somebody else. And that's going to really stir up a little bit more than what we really want. So I'm 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 saying in a common way is I would like to really uh digest this a little bit more than just hearing it. Uh uh the the gentleman that came from Florida, I apologize for the long empty ride you had or fly, whatever you 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 think, but we need time to digest. That's my opinion.
You have anything to say, sir?
No, I think you're all spot on. I think we do need to discuss this amongst ourselves. I think it's a very attractive proposal. Uh I'm very interested in it, but you know, don't be hasty. I like that mayor here obviously, Commissioner Bruno didn't have to leave. And I'd like to get some info from the citizens as well, like Commissioner Piner said. Um but yeah, this sounds very good.
Hey, guys, can you can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hey, very good. Hey, welcome. Thanks, everybody, for coming. Uh I'd like to ask Mike Devine a question. Is Mike in there? Hey, Mike, can you give your two cents about fiber to the board real quickly while you're here?
Um I think that the this fiber network they're proposing would be a great benefit.
Can you hear him there? I'm sorry.
I can hear.
Okay, okay.
Fiber optic that they're bringing is the only alternative we have to contact. The speed is orders of magnitude faster. The price is ridiculously cheap compared to what business can for context. There's legal questions that are way beyond that. Just a technical perspective, I would love to see fiber and open. I think it could bring more business. You they benefit to the residents. It's uh much cheaper than the context. There are some downsides that we've talked about, but this is internet. There's no team. So residents will have to go to screen. And as you alluded to, some may not be comfortable with that. Overall.
And and that's the part that I I was trying to um uh reject is some people have the forest dig. They some have to use Comcast for their computer. Some don't want to go Comcast because they don't need it for the computer, so they have to get the internet. So people have different things in their house right now. And I don't want to disturb any of them. I know this is a is a plus for the uh community, but we happen to have more input from the community. That's that's all I can say.
Very good. Thanks, Mike. Hey, John Downs, I had a quick question for you. Did you review the agreement?
I did.
And do you see any, is there anything that uh is out of line?
I don't see anything that's out of line. And as I understand it, this is uh similar to, if not identical to, the one that they used with Haverty Grace. Um there's a lot of technical jargon in here. And when you when you mix the technical jargon with the legalese, it gets a little confusing. So I think I think that it needs some work. I mean, there's some obvious things that just need to be cleaned up that can be done or processing that the city of Elkton versus town of Elkton, stuff like that. But but from the technical perspective, um I I think we need some other eyes looking at the contract other than just mine. But
Very good.
To answer your question, no, the the mechanics and the skeleton of the of the agreement is, seems to be sound. And I think we can uh do some wordsmithing work together and make it work.
Good. Could I ask you to do some work with the folks from the Think Big Network and get this thing worked out and then uh uh our board will digest this the the next two weeks till we we till we get together uh on the first uh Wednesday in September?
Sure can.
You guys good with that?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you so much.
All right.
I'm gonna say yes. We're good with that on there.
So at this time, I guess we've all spoken. I guess we can care pretty much what they're all saying. This is that the fact that you are new, something new to us. We're going to sell this to our community, but in order for us to sell it to the community, it has to be sold to us. So that's why there's going to be some more outreach services like the mayor and our I T person in the back. So we can come up with something common in order to get back with you. And I'm quite sure we would give that responsibility to our assistant town administrator Michelle and Nancy here. Make whatever connection is necessary on the head of that. And certainly at this point, we appreciate your coming. And particularly the the long trip that you took, sir, to be here with us. And this is not a meeting that's going without work. I think there's something that we all were able to obtain coming and we'll get back to you when the time comes. Thank you.
And you've done a good presentation. Uh let you know, that wasn't a no. That's just a give us a time. They talk about it. So it's a good presentation and it sounds good. And like I said, I T gave some good um pointers for us. So we go with that. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Planet of the Park, would you please come forward? Please, after they remove themselves, we just fill. And then after that, we will have uh Mr. Laco. Come come forth in that order.
Hello. Hello. Um the planning department is requesting approval and acceptance of twenty twenty-three annual report. This report was heard and recommended for approval to the mayor commissioners by the planning commission on August twelfth. Um I believe you have it in front of you. Uh so the annual report states that there are no, there were no new residential permits issued um in twenty twenty-three. There were two deannexations all from Delancey Road and uh identification to improve bike and pedestrian planning through the East Elkton traffic and circulation study led by Will Matko in conjunction with town began in August of last year. Um essentially, the whole reports um only a short form report is required because of having less than fifty new residential permits. Requires only a short form. So that is it.
Do you need approval for that or we just heard?
Yes, please.
Okay, may we have a motion for approval of uh report from planning department?
Sure.
There's motion. Second, can approve all those? Prove, say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it. Motion is carried. You're free to go and your report is approved. Thank you for coming in.
Thank you.
If you will, sir, please come forward.
You okay, Piper? Standing up?
Yes, you may.
Thank you.
We are in the housing and I'm about to be able to hear you.
No, ma'am.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. I'm in. Thank you. So first, thank you, Mayor. Oh, thank you, Commissioner. Thank you, esteemed members. I I'm Michael Babel. I'm with a fairly new company called Level Five Cyber. Um we are uh let me uh we'll jump into the agenda here. So first, thank you for the opportunity. Slide Things Network. Great. All right, just a little bit of an agenda. I'll go over our company overview, um what we're about. I was asked to kind of present a little bit about the threat landscape. What does that cyber threat landscape look like out there? And more specifically, how does that, what's the effect on the town developing? We'll go through services overview and then few minutes. So if you have any questions along the way, I'm happy to address those up front here. So a little bit about our company. We've been around, we're a small company. We've been around about three and a half years. We started in March of twenty twenty-one. We're right at the beginning of COVID. So we are, there was four founders. Uh we are all semi-low, where the founders are. I reside in Cecil County. My colleagues reside in New Jersey, now North Carolina and Delaware. So we are our focus for the last twenty-plus years, coming from different organizations, we've worked together in the past. Some of my team members go back thirty years to N Y C station and local credit banks. So we we've all been focused on networking, cybersecurity, engineering. Um our core focus is really around what we call operational technology or O T environment. And what that really equates to is critical infrastructure, power plants, waterworks, things like that, the nine-one-one, the emergency systems. So those in our mind are all critical and we're just here. So and and most importantly here, we we're a small company, we're nimble, we are not successful unless our customers are successful. And it's really about making sure that we have the flexibility and doing meeting or more importantly, exceeding a customer's expectations. So jumping into what does this threat landscape look like? So more specifically, we've been doing this for twenty-some years. So what are some of the things that we find when we go out into client premises and we look at the networks and we do our cyber risk assessments? So some common ones are, probably maybe some of these terms, phishing, spear phishing, things like that. So we've all heard about the Prince of Nigeria asking for money, asking, you know, ready to give an inheritance if you provide some information. So that's a probably a bad example of phishing. But when you think about spear phishing, what is that? Spear phishing is a little bit more targeted. It can actually be very targeted. So if I'm a threat actor and I really want to get into an organization, I'm going to do a lot of reconnaissance and look at who I want to target. What is the role? What's the company that they work for? What is their family members doing? And I get a lot of this information from Facebook, LinkedIn and other online social media things. So I can craft my email very specifically so that you might think, oh, what is this attachment that they're sending? I know you're going to a conference, you posted on LinkedIn, here's an agenda that's been updated. Then you take a look at this and give me your feedback. Open that up. Well, it could be malware, right? Or direct you to a link. So spear phishing can be very targeted, very tricky, and it's really designed to pull the security professionals out. So so that's one example. Weak compromised passwords. So we've all heard about the data breaches that happen time after time. So the state of breaches, what happens with those credentials and user information that's found, right? A lot of times that goes to what we call the dark web. The the bigger portion of the internet is not exposed. And a lot of times that information is sold there, right? Or given away. So we can compromise credentials, lack of role-based access controls. And what that means is if I have a job to do, a lot of times I have more permissions than what I need to have in order to do my job. So an overage of permissions, essentially. Improper use of accounts. So we see a lot of organizations that maybe you have a system administrators that use that same account to administer the systems as well as their day-to-day jobs. So what that means in terms of a a cyber attack is if I compromised your machine because you clicked on that wrong PDF that you should not have, well, now I have your credentials and permissions as an admin user, right? So I have a whole lot more ability to do what I should not be doing on your system and pivoting to other systems. Trusted suppliers, so companies that we do business with day-to-day, they're probably good companies. We trust that you give them a secure connection such as a D P M or a tool, private network into your environment. But what's security control today? So a lot of these attacks, successful attacks, may come through your suppliers that have those trusted connections. Device vulnerabilities, including I O T or Internet of Things devices. So we're starting to see these way more and more nowadays. These are things like your smart cameras. Your maybe your thermostat's in your homes or your office things that are, you know, accessible via the internet, even refrigerators and things like that. Those are all these smart devices that have a connection to the network. Leveraging default credentials. So as you're buying these smart devices, do you go ahead and actively change the passwords? Maybe the user ID and the password to get into that and maybe administer or manage that, right? But a lot of times these credentials are not changed, right? And we'll talk more about this one in a few minutes. And then lack of improper or lack of or improper network segmentation. And then lack of improper or lack of or improper network segmentation. And what this means is separating your business networks, such as the emergency system or nine one one system being separated from. Actually, being separated from the, the waterworks as examples here. So these are some of the common things that, that we see, whether we're out doing risk assessments, we're out doing other types of cybersecurity work for our customers. And and I, I feel the mention, our, our customers are all over the world, right? We, we want to get our name out here and start to expand to some local municipalities and businesses in Maryland. And and expand what we're doing and be able to take our twenty plus years of cybersecurity experience and, you know, share that with, you know, the businesses here. So I'm going to jump into. What's the current threat landscape? So if you think, is this really real? I mean, we have seen a lot of stuff in the news, but if I get a little bit more specific. And, you know, even township specific and somewhat local, not, not kind of sees the county or Elton here. But this is from four years ago, this is nine one one system is in Delaware and Delaware County, right? So that, that's pretty local. But we have also have warnings that our drinking water across America is at risk of attack. China, Russia, Iran. Cyber incidents impacting the county's emergency communication system. And if you take a look at most of these dates here, the first one was four years old. But this is January of this year, the other one I think was April. But local government falls prey to rise in ransomware attacks. This was just last month in July. And then hackers, and then this is Austin, Texas. So it's a little further away, but it's another nine one one system. And a lot of these systems are very similar, they have the same vulnerabilities, a lot of the times the same software. But this system was brought down, this was about two weeks ago. Cyber attacks on the water systems again, the E P A is urging utilities to take immediate action to protect those environments. And then the hackers carrying out attacks on the water systems. And Georgia County severed the network connection for the state voter registration system. You know, voting season's coming up very soon. And then uh. Last one on here, Delaware County again, the, another cyber attack there and this, I believe, was related to the network segmentation issues or improper. So, so those are just some of the real wordies, but what does that really mean? What does that look like here? So if I. It, this is from a free tool called Shodan. Shodan is essentially used to crawl the global internet and look for connections on the internet. But more specifically, it builds out a database of what these assets were. So in this example here, this was a presentation that I did for the state of California, probably about four years ago. And I actually drilled in, I, those what use, those red dots are clusters of assets that we, in this case was back then or building automation controls. So these are systems that run your goals, the lighting systems, the A P X systems, generators, things like that that are associated typically with building automation. So I put in that keyboard and I kind of drilled down into the city of Sacramento, right? So, but I'm not in Sacramento, so. We did uh Elton in this case. So what does Elton look like? And I didn't put any keywords in there like back net, like I just talked about. But I put in a control system here and you see that there's two thousand eight hundred and one resorts. Right? They, they came up that those exist in this township and you can get very specific, you can put in device types. You can put in tags, like I want to see a semen type camera, right? Where I want to. Put in a G P S coordinate and look for all these things. So you can get town blocks, you can get very specific on buildings. But in this case, two thousand eight hundred and one, what does that look like on a map? Well, it looks like a bridge fingerprint here, that's over Elton. Right? But let's drill in and take a look at that a little bit further. And you see that this is pretty widespread, right? So if I want to look for things that are very specific. Like water systems or P L Cs and valve pumps, stuff like that, that may be connected with an I P address onto the networks. You know, this is where I can now zoom in and start to drill down. So, so what does that look like? I'm just gonna have a few examples here. These are obviously four examples of different I T cameras that I pulled up last week, right? Now. Hopefully, going back to that default credentials comment that I made. Hopefully, these have been changed from the default credentials. It doesn't mean I cannot brute force attack it and figure out what these passwords are, but. If I didn't change that, there are websites out there that I could say, what is the default password for an ORX camera? Right? And it will give you a list of what those options are. Um, same thing for any of these other types of camera vendors, right? I can go in and I can find out what those default passwords, default credentials, put that in and. I'm in somebody's camp, whether it's a building system camera, a home camera, um, things like that, these are accessible. So this was just four examples last week. So getting a little more specific, what is this? I know it's hard to read here. This is what they call an A T T device, an automated tank. This, I, I have this mic down, this is from Baltimore, this was last week. And basically this is telling me a fuel station, here's the three tanks that we have, here's how much fuel they have. Here's how much percentage capacity they have, things like that. So when they get low, it sends an alarm. The person that runs the gas station or the fuel station can go and say, hey, I need a refill, send you trucks. So what happens if I go in here and I manipulate that and say, oh, it's not eighty percent capacity, it's only fifteen percent, I need you to come fill up. What happens then? Then we have a hat, right? We have an over fueled or fuel spillage at the fuel station, right? So that's not. Two other examples, these are not from Maryland, these are actually from Texas, but, and this was actually from a couple of years ago. But this is a, a sematic, a semen sematic controller, like the controller controls valves, pumps. Pressure, things like that based on sensor data that it's getting and says, okay, it's getting too hot. Thermostat are a great example. So if it gets too hot and reaches that set point or certain temperature, it knows to open a valve or close a valve and. Turn on the heater, turn on the air conditioner. That's what this type of devices, these are usually in factory, temporary block structure, waterworks, things like that. And and this is, it says scan P C, it's basically a, a Windows workstation that's available to the internet. And SCADA is supervisory control and data acquisitions typically used in waters and water pipelines, fuel pipelines, things like that, oil and gas. This is a big part of that. So these are accessible today. So that's, that's why I want to make sure that we're all aware that, you know. Things aren't going to be accessible, a lot of times they are intended to be, but it's having the right levels of controls in place. And it's, and I will tell you, a lot of the infrastructure across. Any questions on that side? So just getting wrapping up here, just an overview of what we do. So the, the reason for me presenting today or having the opportunity to be here. Is really to get our name out there, Level Five Cyber. Um, but also to give, you know, there's opportunities that we can help the township, help the surrounding neighboring businesses, we would love to do that. Some of the services that we provide are risk assessments, so both traditional risk assessments and rapid risk assessments. So when we think about the difference between those two, organizations that have some level of cybersecurity might do a traditional risk assessment where. These can take seven to twelve weeks, depending on how large that's focused, and they're very deep, very thorough, they have a very defined action plan that give you a roadmap from maybe the next twelve months to three years. Right? So we can take organized steps in the right, right order of events to reach that cyber risk posture that you want. A lot of organizations that we go to and to, especially when you talk about factories, manufacturing, areas like that. They have not done much, so it doesn't make sense to go in there and spend twelve weeks. And they have time and money spent on this big, deep assessment when they know they haven't got the basic things in place. So that's where this rapid risk assessment comes up, where we focus, these are generally three to four weeks. We focus on ten common controls that, that you would find, and these ten common controls are interchangeable. So if you say. Hey, we already have a good handle on this, but we could use this other area, we can absolutely work that into it. But the point is, you still have an actionable plan to get those four foundational controls in place. That gives you the opportunity to get those in place, reduce the risk to the environment, and then build out a more robust program on top of that. So that's the risk assessments. We talked about network segmentation, so separating the example I used was the emergency or nine one one network from Parks and Rec from maybe the waterworks to Park and Pair. But we can go in here and do the design of that, understand the topology, the assets that you have, the business processes that they, they run with. Or operate for, do that design that works for your environment, do the implementation of that, and then bundle that with. Optional support services, and we'll talk about those support services right now. What we call post segmentation support services. Because generally when we're working with factory environments or with other critical infrastructure or most small to medium sized businesses, for that matter. They don't have the resources in place to do this stuff, right? So that's a common reason why the firewalls in the network segmentation pieces are not there. So you can get them in and then there's some level that's needed to support that, right? And what that means is, if you have a new device that's going into your protected security zone. Then you have to go through a change request process to get that change implemented on the firewall. And it timely matters so that you can continue to run your business or get to the next step of the project. So that's part of change management. There's also the day to day stuff, just making sure you keep the firewall updated, make sure the rules are clean. And then adapt it to the client processes. So if the client already has a set of processes, so they use a change management system already. We will go ahead and adapt whatever we're doing for them to use those processes. So that's the post segmentation support. And again, these can come bundled. So if you need a firewall design implementation. And you want to package it with a one, two, three year setup services, so you don't have to worry about it. You guys do all the protocols for whatever changes are needed, we do the implementation of projects approvals. Firewall lifecycle management. So at some point, those firewalls are going to get old, right? Whether it's three years, five years, seven years, most often it's five. Five to six years. So as those firewalls get old, the technology is uh more advanced, get new hardware. So this does become a risk at some point. If the firewalls are legacy, the vendors no longer support it, they no, no longer offer security patches for that. You're going to want to get those refreshed so maybe you don't have that security risk, because the problem is, if that firewall hardware dies. You have nothing to replace it with and now you're back to a wide open environment until you get it replaced. So we can plan those out as well. And then a lot of times you want to take advantage of those next gen or those newer advanced firewall features and capabilities that are on those. And then just business consulting and enablement. What this is generally referring to is. If you have cybersecurity standards, whether they're on your business side of, hey, we don't allow going to certain websites or things like that. Generally, you'll have cybersecurity that maybe you want to start to apply to those new protected zones. So depending on what those assets do, they're generally. More critical than your business assets where your users are out there, you know, on the internet checking their email, opening attachments that are at a much higher risk. You want to protect those uh, those critical systems from those types of business systems. So. Having standards in place to say what's allowed and what's not allowed is a key part of what we can design here. In addition to change management processes. So we talked about the firewall and the change management services. A lot of times organizations don't have a change management tool. So we have to build out a process for them that works for their environment from an operational sustainability perspective. So we can do that as part of these consulting. And then the secure, secure remote access. A lot of times, you know, when you're putting in a firewall and you're securing these critical environments. You do have to have third party suppliers sometimes because they manage it. It would be like protecting an H factor, heating, ventilation and air conditioning environment. And you have a third party vendor that supports it and they still need to get to it for remote access and do things like that. We can set up of security that integrates with your fire. And this last one may not apply so much here, but this is acquisition integration support. A lot of the companies that we deal with, we deal with Fortune one thousand, Fortune five hundred, Fortune ten, Fortune one hundred. Companies all over the world, a lot of times they do acquisitions and they acquire new businesses or new factories. We can go in there and make sure that that hardware that they just acquired, because it typically doesn't match the buying companies, that we can swap those out, get those. Aligned on their hardware standards, if there are cybersecurity standards in place that matches the buying company. So basically integrating that, that new business into the divide. So. Any questions on this? Right, last slide here, just contact information. Hopefully this was of interest and informational, but I welcome any questions that you have. There's my email address, cell phone number. I'd welcome any questions then. Hopefully that was it, within my twenty minutes.
Well, basically, we certainly enjoy your twenty minute presentation. Uh, we don't have a. Definite answer, but he going to put the uh out stock in the mic, but whatever he developed or whatever he thinks that we need to know. From this, he can certainly email myself and he will remember the mayor and Michelle as well. If you have any awkward concern that, that's the very important to us and the town operations.
Absolutely. And for what it's worth. Most of my teamwork's remote. I love the idea of fiber optic out. I, I live in Cecil County, not Elton, I live in northeast, but. Fiber at home sounds awesome.
As we continue on, um, we're moving further above, we will have administrator report, those are deeds from. South Stream first L L C, kind of matter of fact, two. South Stream first L L C, Michelle, you want to receive that in whatever respect you want.
The deeds are um, the result of a public works agreement that the town had with the developers of South Stream. And that's a neighborhood just off of Whitehall Road, it's just east of um. Or just north of Buttonwoods, east of Kensington Courts. And the deeds are cover public open space, which is seven point nine seven acres of land, stormwater management, one point oh six acres of land and a public park. Just about a quarter acre of land. This is really just administrative correction because the um developer inadvertently or incorrectly deed of these properties over to the homeowners association. When under the public works agreement, they should have been sent to the town. So this is simply an administrative correction for, so that we can take. Deed to the, or title to the property and John reviewed them.
So can we get a motion on that first deed um. L L C zero point two eight three.
So.
Second.
Problem move the second that we accept these deeds as proposed, all those are paid or losing sound of I. I have a motion is carried and Michelle, the second was, was seven point nine seven three. Or is that uh?
There's, that's actually the deed for the two parcels, um, the uh, public open space at one point oh five nine acre. And in a stormwater management area, I beg your pardon, I misstated that. The um, public open space, seven point nine three, seven acres, and then the stormwater management area, one point oh five nine.
Okay, from that point then, up to now, we're done with our uh agenda. Other than there being reports from any of us who are commissioners, Earl or Rodney, you have any? And can bring forth that.
I don't have anything to speak, sir.
Uh, good, and I always have something for Alicia right there. Uh, I have time to shorten how you uh. Um, mending up for the forthcoming event that.
Little small thought that's coming up.
Oh, is it small? I didn't know that. I've learned. Well, let's say, let's say the base is small.
We are three and a half weeks out, I think. Um, things are looking great, our buyer numbers are, are good. We are almost completely full with our sponsorship, um, marketing is going out to the community. Things are looking great. Weather's going to be perfect.
That's, that's a necessity.
It's an absolute necessity.
Okay, um, Chief, you have anything you want to bring, hold on.
Yeah, I would love to um, let you guys know that we just got awarded thirteen thousand two hundred dollars through Gun Violence Reduction Grant. And that's to be used for all sort of overtime to target our Maryland criminal um networks. Um, and our um violent offenders. We also just got awarded thirty five thousand dollar grant. For to, that's going to pay for software program called I A Pro, which will allow us to digitalize our um. Internal investigations, our use of force reports and our pursuit reports. And it also kind of acts as an early warning system for us too. Um, to see if we're having any problems of maybe the, the lot, you know, the same officer involved in some of these use of forces or. So we could do some uh early intervention. Um, it will also pay, I know you guys just saw this, but a twenty thousand dollar bill for Trilio. So we got that funded as well to pay for that. So we're real excited about those two, we're waiting on a couple more. Um, we also are having interviews tomorrow for the um. For the school resource officer, the second one that was funded um through the Maryland Senate for State Schools. I did meet with um Principal Brown at the middle school and uh, it looks like we're forming a good partnership there. So that we can have that presence in the middle school. So real excited about all those things. Um, we're also looking at um, and I'm going to apply for a grant. That will allow us to, one, we're hoping we can get a crime analyst on a grant, so contractually. That we could do something like that, that will free up some of our detectives. The sheriff's department actually has two, that they, they had one for a couple of years unfounded, so worthwhile that now they have two. And on that same grant, we're hoping to do some kind of juvenile um. Um, program that where the police officers can interact with the juveniles. We just finished up two weeks of junior police academy. Such great response, both from the parents and the kids that are involved in that. And I actually had one kid at the second graduation approach me and said. Chief, this is wonderful that we get to do this for a week um every year, but could we meet monthly? So we're actually looking at seeing what we can do. We're hoping to get it funded uh through this other grant. So we're actually looking at seeing what we can do, we're hoping to get it funded, uh, through this other grant, we also have that, um. Uboid restitution money that we maybe can use as long as we're targeting kids that, um, are affected by opioid usage, so. Through their family or something, so just to give you an idea of some things that are going on.
Sounds good. Michelle, can you, uh, give us an update on quality of life and other qualities of quality of work?
At the moment, I was hoping Dan would be here, I know that they are, um.
They're not online.
No, sir, they're not, but I can tell you the, um, the little bit that I know, and I'm gonna see if I can get Virginia to speak up as well. At the end of the day, obviously the concerns about, um, the, the dirty taste of the water and, and so forth. They've been flushing hydrants all around town and so forth, and yes, it was originally attributed to the, um, the sustained heat. It's coming through the pipes and so forth, and at the water treatment plant, the water incoming was like eighty degrees or so at one point. But that being said, they were flushing and getting, um, improving the quality coming out of all the hydrants. But it seemed to come back, so now they're looking at source testing, so where the water comes into the plant. Where the water comes into all of our, uh, infrastructure, they're testing there to see what's going on and then. Cleaning it up and maybe adding some additional filtration. I'm trying to get Virginia to.
You know, this seems to be pretty widespread, it sounds, I'm hearing it come all over, um, but Jean and I at Elton Heights, we have not experienced anything like this.
Well, you know, the interesting thing, um, Virginia's done a really good job of trying to pinpoint, uh, patterns associated with it. And one, a couple of neighborhoods, we've heard nothing from, hence your neighborhood, but then other areas we're hearing it. It's quite dense in areas, so we're trying to figure out what pattern do we have here, what do these areas have in common? So again, standing back, and I use the analogy, the experts, I don't know if you've ever heard, but the truck that got stuck underneath the overhead. And all of the experts were pulled out to see what's gonna, what can we do, this engineers, mechanics and so forth. And a little twelve-year-old came by and said, why don't you let the area out of the tires? So we've got so many people that are so, they have so much knowledge, now we're trying to stand back and getting other eyes on it to see what we can do. But they, they've been working literally night and day trying to come to the bottom of it.
And we are seeing no definite pattern?
We do see in certain areas, and then there are areas such as yours where there's no problem. So, yes, sir.
Commissioner, do you have any problems at your, at the tattoo parlor? I had Mark come down and let me check ours because now it's just so strong.
Is there anyone online virtually that may want to speak to us at this moment? See a few names.
I'm asking everyone to unmute and getting their response.
Yes, ma'am, Alicia, please.
Since you brought up Fall Fest, I'm curious if there's been any movement on the Howard House and any changes with that.
No, I know, I guess Earl and, and, and Rob, like itself, I guess we heard about their wanting to be a meeting. But there has not been a meeting. I still think it's, uh, unfortunately it's psyched for you, letting you come upon another fall fest, but, uh, we have no jurisdiction over that. Yes, sir, Chip may have something.
I believe they may have gone to settlement, the title company did call me about some questions last week, so if it hasn't gone yet, it's very close to settlement.
I know, I think BBW, they moved the fence behind, uh, the Howard House to be closer up as we prepare for Fall Fest in case we see that area back there, but. Um, I guess we're a couple of weeks out, we don't.
No, because we're still stuck a couple of months.
And we're still faced with the doing of it being a privately owned building.
Alicia, you have the Horton Center County Bank, what was a PNC bank, see what's happening in there to tell us?
Is there something happening?
I don't know, Dr. took a daily stroll, that's bad.
I haven't seen a thing happening down here.
Nothing's happened there.
Yeah.
We, we were contacted by someone who I believe is gonna purchase it to put some type of a cafe, something like that in. But I haven't heard back from him yet.
Was that the, um, the mayor had mentioned something a month or so ago, was that the thing?
Yeah. He has other restaurants.
Okay, that's it, we're done, have a good afternoon.